Tonight is a continued hearing on eighty-two Porter Street. So Julia, can you bring forward, I assume Adam Brodsky and the other?
Yes, promoting the team to panelists now.
And Julia, you'll probably see me in the audience with the other device and I'll switch off of it once, once I get in.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just not able to see the screen on this one, which is strange.
Chair McMorris, this is Adam Brodsky. I think we have everyone present.
All right. So I. From last meeting, we had some submissions that came in. Just before last meeting that we really didn't have an opportunity to consider. But we have had an opportunity to consider since then. We also have received a peer review by Weston and Sampson. There's a letter from Kohasset Police, a letter to the ZBA with additional materials dated nine twenty-four. Revised revised site plan dated nine twenty-four and a memo from the applicant dated nine twenty-three. In the prior meeting, just before the meeting, we had received a letter from the Gulf Association. We had received a response letter from Campos Hudson Engineering. And we had received the existing conditions of the HUD plan dated nine eleven twenty.
Chair McMorris, you may be reading from the second hearing this evening, which is ninety-four Black Horse Lane. We're on eighty.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. You're right. I am. The first part I meant, the second part I didn't. So.
I'm happy to bring you up to speed if that would be helpful.
Yes, let's do that. Why don't you start us out?
Thank, thank you, sir. And my name is Adam Brodsky. I'm a local environmental and land use lawyer. And I represent the applicant Co Lobster LLC, which owns the former Mill River Boatyard at eighty-two Border Street. Tom Sullivan is the manager of the LLC. Aman O'Mara, who's on this evening as our project manager. Susan Holy and Corinna Martinez from HMA Architects are the project architects. And Deborah Keller are registered professional engineer with Merrill is also attending this evening. We last met with you on September ten. And at that point, the board asked for some additional information, which we provided in a package. Dated September twenty-four, twenty-four. And I'll just briefly identify the issues and where the relevant information can be found. First, we were asked for additional information regarding parking. And I refer the board to Co Lobster's memo dated September twenty-three. Which provides a management plan for the facility and parking. And demonstrates that our, our proposal is consistent with three other comparable small hotels with respect to employees. We also, in that package, provided an off-site parking plan to address storm events. And just as an aside, I do a fair amount of permitting in Hull. And that's become a standard special condition of our permitting that the applicants provide. A management plan to ensure that vehicles are removed from sites during major storm events. And Mr. O'Mara is available to answer any questions you may have with respect to those items. We were also asked to provide some additional detail with respect to the calculation of lot coverage. That was provided in a summary chart with all of the components in sheet C four. Of the rise site plan and, and Deb is available to answer questions regarding that. We were asked for some additional information regarding traffic safety. We are working with Weston and Sampson in connection with its peer review for planning board site plan review. And Merrill is preparing site, site distance analysis. To provide the additional information that Weston Sampson has requested. So we're actively working on that. We're happy to share it with the Board of Appeals. But suggest that perhaps that may be a condition of any approval if that's not completed by the time the board deliberates on this matter. We were asked for additional information regarding the potential for division diversion diversion, excuse me, floodwaters. And in my letter, I provided the explanation why the project will not increase channelization or impact surrounding areas. And again, is available to, to address that issue. As a note, as part of that analysis, Merrill recalculated the amount of fill that we're proposing. To elevate portions of the property. And in fact, the amount of fill was reduced from nine hundred and fifty cubic yards to six hundred and seventy cubic yards. We have less fill being proposed brought onto the site. We were asked for additional information regarding vehicle barriers at the recommendation of Mr. Holland. And we've added wheel stops to the parking spaces beneath the new both house building. And we had already proposed ballards, ballers, excuse me, for the parking spaces along the proposed walkways. Again, Deb is available to answer any questions. And again, Mr. Holland raised a question, and I think it was more of a building code question regarding the potential of encroachment. Of the gatehouse building into Port Street. And Susan and Corinna have addressed that and explained why fighter fire rating of materials is not required. So again, we're here to answer any additional questions or explain any of the information we provided. And we'll be guided by how you want to do that, Chair McMorris. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the team want to add anything at this point? Okay, Woody, you're the, you're the designated on this particular one. So if you have any, you want to lead us off?
Yeah, I mean, they're largely in the form of questions as opposed to challenges, but. Adam, maybe you or one of your team can, can deal with a couple of things. It seems to me, or it seemed to me that Weston and Sampson, as they wrote their. First version of the peer review or first go around. Had a concern about one of the seven parking lots, one of the nine parking lots in terms of did it meet our dimensional specs? Was there a response to that? Or was, was that a possibly a mistake on their part or?
Mr. Chek, I'll defer to Deb, but I believe they were referring to the one handicap parking space. Which was in fact sixteen feet wide. The portion that was not striped is eight foot, the striped portion is eight feet. And so it's, does comply, and I believe that Mr. Brewer confirmed that in fact. That does comply with the ADA requirements and, and the bylaw. But I'll defer to Deb if I misspoke.
All good. That is absolutely correct.
Okay, good. So that takes that off the table. A second issue, I, a question I really had. Is there going to be a dock here? I, I looked at the. Both, both sets of plans and back a month ago, there was on the proposed site plan. Float and aluminum gangway by others. Has that been eliminated? I didn't see that in the most recent, the more recent version.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chidik. We're, we're not proposing at this time a pier and float. I mean, it's, there's vestiges that remain, I think, in the landscaping plan, but we made clear in the narrative that we submitted that we're not seeking to permit this at this time.
Okay, and, and there will or will not be a small dock in its place?
No, sir, there, there's nothing proposed. That would have to be permitted separately, and it's not part of this project.
Okay. Well, no, but it would be, I think, a concern of the board regarding how such a dock would be used and for whom. Would it require, you know, extra parking or would it be for the exclusive benefit of guests of the hotel?
So there was some discussion regarding the use of floats during construction. And I don't know if that's what, where you're getting this from, but we're not proposing any pier, gangway or floats in connection with this project.
Okay, no, that takes that issue off the table. I was not entirely clear. The third item again, I had, which is more in the realm of question. The plans done by Holy Martinez are all. Labeled as ZBA submission not for construction. What does a not for construction mean? And are we approving something that's more conceptual than. An actual plan that we have to. Deal with.
Mr. Chek, I'll defer to Susan and Corinne to explain that.
Hi, Corina Martinez, Holy Martinez Architects. Mr. Chidik, it is standard for us and most architects when you provide documents that aren't. Fully detailed.
Working drawings.
Working drawings to give to a contractor. You put non, not for construction to avoid confusion because a lot of drawing sets get moved around. And we just want to make certain when construction time comes around, the contractor has. The most valid detailed set.
Yeah, and the other, Susan Hodley, Hodley Martinez. Mr. Chidik, the other side of that is that when, well. When, when you, when you go to use the drawings, it's to, for actual construction and bidding. It's, it's very helpful. Many, many, many people look for that note. And the absence of that note to make sure that working drawings are indeed. The, the, the sort of the, the ultimate set. And it, it, it is certainly our intent to. Integrate every requirement and piece of input that has been finalized in these. Hearings to make sure that there is continual, there's continuity between what is agreed in these hearings and actually constructed.
I, I think the main concern that we have is that we don't need to know where every nail and outlet is going to be. But we do need to know that the drawings that we have. Are accurate representations of where the building is going to be, what the size of them is going to be, you know, all the things that are within our jurisdiction.
We're happy to take the note off. I'm just.
I don't, I'm not concerned about the note. I just want to make sure that we have drawings because obviously. One of the conditions that always goes into our decisions is that the. Project is going to be built in accordance with the plans that were filed as part of the application. And I do understand that, you know, the construction drawings are, show a lot more detail. But what we're seeing here is what's going to be built. Is that correct?
That's correct. Absolutely.
Okay, well, those are my three majors, David. Might have a couple of other little nits and nats, but.
I had a question, or I guess. The, the issue with the removing cars during. Extreme storm events. I mean, it's a practical matter. I suspect there's not going to be a lot of guests here during this extreme storm event, but. Is there, is there a plan that's actually going to be? In place and essentially finalized and contracted. For placement and moving cars and keeping them during storms.
Dave, let me just kind of add to that. I don't think it's enough to say we will use available public spaces. In back of the Lightkeepers without any agreement with the select board or others. I mean, it's not within your. Purview to be able to, you know, claim X number of spaces. So you. Need a going forward plan, I guess, probably with the selectmen, but we'll see. Anyway, sorry.
Chair McMorris, I, we're, we're happy to a condition that requires that we submit the final approved plan. For your approval prior to, for example, the issuance of the building permit. And to Mr. Chidik's point. Since we're proposing to use a public parking area that's likely not going to be used by others during a major storm event. It's still appropriate for us to clear that through the select board and or the town manager.
Sure, I don't think any of us sitting here tonight can predict, even in a storm event, if there's a. Pre-arranged event at the Lightkeepers, let's say a rehearsal dinner, you know, the usual celebrations of one sort or another. There may be a full occupancy of that parking lot. You know, available to patrons of the Lightkeepers. I don't, I don't know.
Mr. Chek, we, we, we agree with your concern. Again, to Chairman Morris's point, we don't think that they're going to be guests during major storm events, but we need to be prepared for that. And we need to provide that, that to you.
Just in case, yeah.
Yes, I appreciate that. Another question. And this is, this is. My lack of diligence, I think, is I'm. There's a lot of drawings here that are very well laid out, but I can't quite figure out how the ground coverage is calculated. It would be helpful, I think, if we had some sort of a table for that. I know the, the decking and everything, I believe, is pervious. It won't count as ground coverage, but, you know, I would like to see some, and it may be in here, I haven't found it. How the ground coverage is calculated.
Chairman Morse, I think we did provide that table, but I'll defer to Deb with respect to that.
So we did add it to the zoning table, the lot coverage, the structural coverage and the building coverage? If I can share my screen, if you'd like to look at it. Closer? Okay. So I'm gonna. Zoom in.
Okay, I do see.
Somebody's got their speaker on.
I do see it, you know, the structural coverage and building coverage on the chart. My, my question is, how did you arrive at those numbers?
Okay, um, so, let me see. I have that. I, I can definitely. We calced out each area. And we can give you a table so that we break down for, for example, lot coverage. Includes, where's, where's my note? Because I know there's a different definition for, so lot coverage was all of the impervious coverage. On the site, which would include building, retaining walls and pavement, et cetera. Versus building is obviously the building, but then structural coverage includes. Building, deck, the captain's walk and retaining wall. So there's a little bit of some. Swapping between each one of those calculations. We can provide a table.
Yeah, I think if you were to scroll down on this, not to interrupt too much, but scroll down here.
Yep.
There, there you have, no, keep going. Oh, I thought there was, yes, here.
There we go. Yep.
This, this is a summary as opposed to a, of how you arrived at those numbers, a detailed or, or component.
Correct. So then we can give you a table where it breaks down what each of these numbers were. Like where they, where they came from, like, like other impervious is basically retaining walls, et cetera.
I, I appreciate that.
Okay.
I don't think I have any further questions. Woody, do you have anything else?
Well, there are two things that are not necessarily in our purview, but I think do have. Do deal with parking and, and other elements. First of all, it would be useful. To have your, your plans cycled through our harbor master, Lori Gibbons. I know we don't have jurisdiction below mean high water, but. There is an issue of, there are issues of public safety and access and things and. Not required, but it would be very nice to make sure that she has no. Primary, you know, big concerns. And secondly. Your chapter ninety-one application, I guess, is waiting for this board's decision. Is that correct, Adam, or not?
Yes, Mr. Chidik, we can't file with DDP until we actually have our order of conditions approving the project.
Okay.
We need to complete, we need to complete zoning so we can get our zoning certification for that application.
And again, I don't know if this is, I don't. I don't believe it's required, but it would be very helpful if when you are. In the application process to, to the state. If we could, for the purpose of the file, have your submission. As, of course, it may be after the fact, so I don't know. I mean, I'm probably speaking. Speaking out of.
So, I'll, I'll make a, a note of it and hopefully remember that in the file, the town does get copies of the application. It is on the service list.
We don't necessarily.
I understand.
And six months later, we may, you know, it may be just a dim memory.
Understood. And with respect to the harbor master, I know that the harbor master was consulted with respect to some of the construction methodologies. That were described. And that flowed, no pun intended, from what we learned for the Atlantica project. So I can't say that the harbor master was consulted with respect to this particular project. But the construction methodologies were all, you know.
Sure, I, I, I happened to give her a, a call today and she hasn't seen the plans. She's not sure even if she. You know, will have any, any issues over your, your plans, but. It would be helpful to know that we're not, you're not interfering with navigation or going to be. You know, kind of increasing traffic or, or use of, of the street. I don't know. I mean, I, I, I just think it would be useful to have a comprehensive review. I, I'm not anticipating a thumbs down, but.
And again, I, I would have assumed that as part of the site plan review process, that would have been sent out to all of the departments.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't think it was, but that, that's not our.
We're, we're, I have no problem with sending copy of the plans to the harbor master. Again, we're not proposing to do any work within. The harbor, but for those construction activities. When we need to, for example, use a small boat or something in order to do some of the work.
Yeah, I, I, I think maybe that the, the, the first drawings that showed the aluminum gangway. By others might have been. Problematic, or at least an issue in terms of navigation. You've removed it, I understand. But I think it'd just be helpful to have a kind of comprehensive review of this. As we go, go forth in the process ourselves, the planning board and anybody else that's con, con, for sure.
So I don't mean to interject, but that is my responsibility to send to the other regulatory departments. I believe I emailed Lauren Gibbons, but I'm just double checking on the.
Okay, well, if you haven't, please do. And if you have, maybe she had, had a memory, you know, maybe she forgot.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, that's what I had.
Charlie? Oh, you're muted, Charlie.
Charlie, you're muted.
Can't hear you. There, okay, now I'm on again.
You're good.
The last transcript, the last meeting said the property is not open to the public. That is the existing property. But I, I believe some of it is, is you can go get your lobsters at the tank on the property. So it would seem to me that that is a, that is, is, is open to the, part of it at least is open to the public. Maybe the big shed over the Gulf River is not, not open to the public.
Yes, Mr. Chair McMorris, I mean, when there was a retail operation there. Members of the public were invited to obviously travel to and from the, the business. More specifically, Mr. Higgins, there's no real public access way along the shoreline at the present time. And so the benefit of this project is to create that access way, that captain's walk. So that the public has a public access way all along the shoreline around the property that doesn't exist today.
Screen? Other board members?
I didn't have much to add. I, I think they did a good job with responding to what we asked and. And those materials. I think the one thing I saw on the peer review that I wasn't certain on. Adam, maybe you could just clarify, the setback for space number nine, that's in compliance? Is that correct? I know there was a little, he was unsure because of the site plan, but.
We did double check all of the parking and we are setback five feet from the property line. So we do, by with the setbacks.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Well, I, I had no issues. Or at least issues, no, no issues in addition to what, what's already been raised and discussed.
Thank you.
The same. I don't have any other issues. Everything was explained. Thank you.
Good. I do note that we are also awaiting the final. Updates from Weston and Sampson on parking. I'm referring to the September twenty-fourth letter, Adam.
Yes, sir.
Right. Does anyone have anything else that they'd like to add on the board or in the public or the applicants? Are there any hands raised?
Yes, there are two hands raised. Philip Cantillion is getting promoted to panelist.
Okay.
As well as another participant. Titled Administrator.
All right, let's hear from Mr. Cantillon first. He's muted. We can't hear you, Mr. Cantillon.
Thank you. We just had one quick question that I know, I believe the building has signage. Is that under the purview of this panel? And if, if so. Just a brief description would be helpful. Is it going to be lit all night long? Is it going to be just? An exterior sign with no lighting, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam?
Chairman Morris, I, I believe the actual signage would be addressed through the building department. In connection with the building permit. We have proposed a lighting plan that's part of the plan set. And we're, we're using dark sky compliant minimal lighting that points downward. And I'll, again, I'll defer to Susan and Corinna to address the photometric plan.
Okay. Hello, I'm Susan Hodley from Hodley Martinez Architects. We produced the conceptual. Lighting plan that was submitted. And yes, each one of the fixtures that is described in that points downward. We've been very, very careful to, we, we don't want a, a spectacle. At night, we want to minimize the lighting and make it safe. And we've been very strategic about putting very. The landscape architect has actually worked hard to use downward path lights. So that there aren't, you know, that there aren't ambient lights. Where there doesn't need to be, but just enough light so that you can walk around safely and that. We, we actually also have another feature where for safety, it's possible to. Activate lighting on the site, but that most of the, it's certainly our architectural interest. To keep things very, very soft and subtle and actually even to try to lamp them with warm lighting where, wherever we possibly can.
Thank you, and how about the building signage, is that going to be lit?
So the building signage, uh, that would be lit, uh, would be lit with downlighting, which is only, uh, again, uh, only meant to actually make the, the sign legible. We have not completed the signage package yet, but, uh, do look forward to submitting that to the building department once, uh, once those programs are further developed.
Thank you.
I, I, I should add that the town has strict requirements with respect to signage and signage lighting that we'd have to comply with. Anything else, sir?
Uh, that, that's great, thank you very much, and, uh, we appreciate the time.
Thank you. Um, Paul Tedeschi.
Hello, can you all hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Thank you, Chairman, um, so yeah, we are, uh, Paul and Jill Tedeschi, seventy-five Border Street. We live right across the street from the property that's in reference here to eighty-two border. Um, overall, we're in support of the project, so I'll just start there. Um, I just wanted to bring up a few things we brought up at conservation, um, because I think some of this is more in your purview. But safety, you know, the proposed moving of the crosswalk, crosswalk, um, I guess would be closer to our property, closer to the Border Street Bridge, and just knowing the amount of, you know, traffic that comes flying over that bridge sometimes. I know we've talked about the bike lane and all the positives, but, you know, I just want to make sure we, that someone on the, on the police side of things or safety officers have looked at that proposed crosswalk move. If anything, I feel like it should be moved away towards Atlantica, I think it's a safer bet. I know there's only so much roadway on our side of the property left, but I just feel like that crosswalk moving, you know, is just something to be considered, um, from a safety standpoint. Second is parking, and, um, the other day we had several high tides, as all of us know, I think there's a lot of straw still reminiscent out there. Aiman, I did see you out there and I was just too miserable out there to come join you, but, um, the concern is if we're going to raise the property, elevate the seawall, the displacement, and by no means am I, am I an engineer, but from a practical standpoint, what is the impact to the, uh, culvert, as I would refer to it, between the Gulf River inlet and the, um, I guess it's the west side of our property, there's an opening in the wall there where the, the tidal flow can come in, but that street was flooded just this past week several times at high tide. The cars had to be moved, we offered for Tommy and his crew to move him to our property, I think he's out of the country, so they just moved him up to the end of the driveway, but what's the displacement, um, impact going to be? And while it seems like, I think, you know, Mr. Brodsky in the last meeting, um, last month, in your meeting reference, it would protect our property, I'm concerned about the, the area to the, you know, again, west of us, and how much flooding impact that could have. Um, because it does jump the street there, there's evidence of straw there now still from this past week storms. So, you know, without elevating that seawall all the way up to Atlantica, um, I don't see how it's going to help anybody by doing that.
Where do those parked cars go?
Yeah, and where do those parked cars go, so I know you're talking about, you know, behind the lighthouse keepers and all that, but what if that, you know, that, this was September, so I'm sure September will be a busy month for a hotel in Cohasset, it's one of the nicer months. You know, who's to predict the storm and what that surge is going to do at that time, so just something to please consider, um, you know, from that, because it's both the parking spaces, and again, I go back to this new proposed building, could more spaces be allowed, um, and, and I think higher to the street would be better. With that, as I relate to parking, what's the impact to the parking spaces on the public side of the street on border? So right now, the crosswalk crosses, there's a buffer zone between the crosswalk, but as they exit the property now, what happens to those spaces, you know, are we losing any, and if so, what is the impact? Has the town looked at that, because obviously there's a coveted number of spots between what I refer as Atlantica, um, and, and the lobster pound. So what is the impact of moving the crosswalk and then that exit, what's the loss of parking on the public side? So, thank you.
And.
Oh, sorry, one last thing.
Just one last question, and we're not really sure if this is more your purview or sort of a planning board, but we're just curious, it, it's more of a question, is there any oversight as to, um, the design of the building, being right on, sitting right on the harbor, I, I know the renderings, I don't know how accurate they are, show, um, sort of a, a light yellow stucco building with, um, green shutters and a red roof. And I guess it would just be a question, i- is, is that truly what the building is going to look like? And is there any oversight, um, either with this committee or, um, the planning board as to sort of the architecture, color, and just, you know, uh, the, the overall look on our Cohasset Harbor?
Thank you.
Thanks.
I can, I can tell you that we have no jurisdiction over the appearance of the building. Um, we do oftentimes make suggestions, which oftentimes are followed, um, but we don't have any jurisdiction, any enforcement power over any of that. The planning board has a little bit more than we do.
Okay, uh, thank you.
And do you have members of the team that want to address the other issues? Yes, I'll, I'll briefly just speak and then I'll defer to the experts. Um, you're, you're correct that the planning board is reviewing the design elements of the project, and the general appearance is, is what is shown in the renderings. The renderings don't do all of the details accurately, um, but, uh, with respect to colors and architectural style, um, there, they are accurate, but that, that is an issue that's being reviewed with the planning board. Uh, we're not aware of any legal parking spaces in front of our property, I can't speak to off-site, which seems to be a concern, um, but I, I do want to make the point and, and I'll defer to, uh, either Deb or Susan and Corinna. Uh, when there's a major storm event, the volume of water from, for example, a two percent storm is, is enormous. And so nothing that we're proposing is going to displace that large volume of water anywhere. I mean, unfortunately, uh, the area, uh, is within the flood plain and does flood. Um, but I'll, I'll defer to, to, to Deb on, on the, the, the technical explanation of that. But, um, when you're dealing with a, you know, again, a, a one percent storm, two percent storm, you know, two-year, ten-year storms, uh, it's just a tremendous amount of volume, and so, um, uh, we're, we're not going to be displacing water onto other properties and certainly not going to be displacing waters upland. I believe that Tedeschi's property, uh, rises in elevation, and so, uh, in any way, but Deb, I may have misspoke, I'll defer to you.
I was about to talk and I was muted, um, I think you covered it, it is, it, it is, uh, basically the, the amount or volume of the six hundred and, I believe, seventy cubic, um, feet that we are filling is what I would consider de minimis to a coastal flooding area.
All right. Julia, any more hands on the audience?
George McGoldrick is being promoted to panelist.
All right.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, George McGoldrick from one oh seven Border Street. Uh, is the board think that the, uh, hearing will close out tonight? Or I have a number of questions, but would prefer to wait for a few more of the answers that seem to have been risen tonight? So do you think the, it'll close tonight, or?
We will not postpone the hearing tonight, but.
So there'll be another, there'll be another chance for public comments?
Absolutely, our, our normal practice is to, um, you know, as we get toward the end of, of the hearing, um, someone will, will draft a decision, but we will, we continue the hearing. Um, there will be another session of the hearing, which will open and, and any public comment will be given at that point. Um, if there's, you know, if, if there's not a lot of new things to consider, we often will close the hearing at the end of, of that particular session and then later deliberate the draft decision that we've seen, but tonight we have no draft decision. We have considerably more information that we, um, are looking to have come forward, so we will be continuing the hearing tonight till the next, till our November meeting.
Thank you.
I, I would like to just interject one last thing based on the, uh, prior comment, um, and that has to do with signage, I think it would be useful to get a memorandum or, or, or something dealing with particularly, uh, section six point three and six point, uh, six, I guess it is, you know, what restrictions and, uh, what's allowed, to say that you will, you are complying with that, or you've given that, uh, uh, foresight, it'd be useful to have as opposed to be, be, be silent on that topic, um. There's no reason, no reason why you couldn't comply, for sure, but still.
It isn't, you know, it certainly is a section of the bylaw, if we're going to issue a special permit, we should be considering everything that's in our jurisdiction on the project. Uh, anyone else with questions or comments? All right, seeing none, Woody, do you want to make that motion on this?
I'd make a motion that we continue this hearing until, uh, November, what is it, uh, I should know.
Twelve.
The, November twelfth, oh, because of the election, okay, yes, continue this hearing until November twelfth.
Chairman McMorris, I, I don't mean to interrupt, I apologize, Mr. Chidik, but I, I, uh, I just want to get a sense of whether the board may be prepared on November twelfth, uh, to, uh, to have a decision ready and to deliberate, because I think the additional asks are fairly minor, um, you want some more detail with respect to the table regarding coverage. Uh, do you want me to send the plans to the harbor master? I've, I've, I've not been a project where I've submitted a, a signage package to the zoning board of appeals, but I can certainly talk to the architects regarding that, that, that's typically later in the process, but uh, it doesn't seem like there's a great deal of additional information that the board's looking for. So my hope is that, uh, it may be prepared, uh, and I, I should note, um, w- we know we have to resolve issues with Weston and Sampson as part of the planning board process, but if that is not finalized, I don't see why the board couldn't simply condition its approval on satisfactory review by the planning board, which really is, I, I know you have shared jurisdiction over that, but, uh, is really primary since they have retained Weston and Sampson. Mm-hmm, well, so, that's certainly a possibility, you know, if, if we do have that supplement before the next meeting, we would like to see it.
And I also think, Adam, that we could, um, uh, have the bones of a decision available, uh, and discuss any submissions between now and then, and see if that alters the outcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It's simply an insertion, you know, it's simply a recognition of what came in.
Thank you, sir, again, we're, we're motivated to try and complete our permit, going back to the very beginning, so we can begin the chapter ninety-one process, which is lengthy. Understood, we certainly don't want to delay you, Wendy Lee.
Also, Chair McMorris, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Um, so I just would like to state, the harbor master was sent, um, the request for comment sheet and the link to the plans on August sixth, so I can follow up with her and see if she has any comments for the project.
Okay, great, thank you, that'd be very.
Great, thank you, Julia.
Um, do we have a second to Woody's motion?
I'll second it.
All right, um, all of us in favor, Woody Chidik?
Aye.
Lead us.
Aye.
Charlie, Charlie Higgins, aye.
Matt Watkins?
Aye.
Uh, you, you missed me, David, uh, but I will vote in the affirmative, affirmative as well.
Thank you, I'm looking for my cheat sheet, there we go, um.
Did we get an aye from David McMorris or not?
Yes, aye, so.
There you go.
But, the eighty-two Border Street is continued until our November meeting and we should have a draft decision to consider at that time, and hopefully we'll have the other material that we need. Uh, the next.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chairman McMorris, can you please keep me on for the next hearing also? Absolutely, thank you, sir. Um, all right, the next one is ninety-four Black Horse Lane, Lot One.
So Carmen Hudson, um, has also been promoted, um, as well as I believe Nino DiNino.
Good evening, everyone.
Uh, I'm the newest member of this team, my name is Adam Brodsky, and I represent KD Custom Builders LLC, you know that Mr. DiNino is the manager of the LLC, and you know Carmen Hudson, our professional engineer at Campos Hudson Engineering LLC. Um, a- a- again, uh, it's, it's a fairly simple application, uh, we submitted a simplified application for a special permit for a pier, gangway and dock located within the Cohasset floodplain district. You opened the public hearing, I understand, on September tenth and received comments, uh, I believe in particular from the Gulf Association. Uh, Carmen responded to those comments in her letter dated September tenth, which because of the timing, uh, the board did not, uh, discuss, uh, in any material respect. Car- Carmen's available to answer any, any questions you have, but I say this respectfully, I don't think any of the comments from the Gulf Association relates to the zoning board's jurisdiction under the floodplain zoning bylaw, and probably should, should be addressed to other regulators. As far as the bylaw goes, I understand that the structures comply in all respects with three hundred nine point seven E. Uh, they do not exceed twenty feet in height or two hundred square feet in total ground coverage. Uh, um, there's neither water quality nor natural drainage patterns of any water course which will be adversely affected by the construction of the pier. The pier complies with the purposes of the floodplain zoning bylaw at three hundred nine point one, I can address those more specifically. Um, but this, uh, these structures are similar, if not identical, to numerous other piers that have been approved by the Board of Appeals in Cohasset, and in fact, uh, on the Gulf River. Uh, they've been designed to comply with the strict design and construction standards under the Massachusetts Waterways Regulations, and actually will be reviewed in great detail by Mass D E P Borderways. Uh, none of these structures are going to cause any flooding or pollution hazard. Uh, there's going to be no disruption of flow patterns which affect water storage or runoff capacity, no public safety issues, will not cause damage to public or private property and are located entirely on the Atkins property. So I just summarize, we're, we're here to answer any questions you have, um, this is your typical pile-supported pier, gangway and float, which the board has approved on many other occasions, so happy to answer any questions. Okay, um, I think I, I had a concern last time around, but I still have. You're correct that this is a typical type of dock, but this is a typical length of dock. This is a football field and a half dock across a lot of salt marsh from one backyard. It is, the lot that is the applicant is part of a development of, I guess, four lots. From what I, just roughly looking at the site plans, it looks to me that the lots that do have some waterfront access would require football field and a half docks for their property. Um, I had asked last time if there had been any consideration to, um, perhaps having, since this would be the time, since the lots are all still under the same ownership, to create whatever necessary documents there are, uneasements, et cetera, to have a, a community dock for, say, the whole development, so that even the landlocked lot would have waterfront access. And I, I haven't heard anything yet in response to that, but I would like to hear something. Yes, Chairman McMorris, uh, at the present time, there's no interest in having a shared dock. This dock is intended for use by the owner of this lot. Uh, there's no requirement in, uh, the zoning bylaw for any shared docks. Uh, I do know that some towns will require them, but Cohasset does not. I, I understand that, and I'm, I'm not suggesting that we can require that. What I'm suggesting is that this seems like a good idea, it seems like it, it preserves an awful lot of natural space and habitat that is otherwise going to be covered by at least two more of these docks. And there's no other, there's not going to be any other opportunity to do anything like this, because once the lots are sold, they're all under individual ownership and nothing like that is going to happen. So since we have the opportunity at this point, I understand.
I understand everybody wants a dock. Um. But it seems to me that it should be given some consideration, because it seems to me that it is a for the environment itself, for the appearance of the area, it's a good thing to do. And it also, like I said, it gives the landlocked lot access to water.
So so Chairman McMorris, there's nothing to preclude of the property owners after the lots are conveyed out, if they so choose to pool their resources for a shared dock.
Of course not.
Um, so I just want to make that clear, uh, consideration has been given to your request. It has been ruled out, but the application before you is for a dock for this particular lot. And as you point out, just like the other property owners on the Gulf River who share this uh, um, this uh, uh, this benefit. Um, I'm not going to speak to the appearance of docks, um, I actually find them interesting, um, they're certainly not a natural feature of, but um, that's a question of aesthetics, again, I think that's going far beyond what the floodplain bylaws intended to address. And whatever environmental concerns will be addressed uh, by the Conservation Commission um, and potentially the chapter ninety-one Waterways Program. Um, I do not believe that there will be adverse impacts to the wetland resources. In fact, the wetlands regulations specifically allow the construction of docks over salt marsh. I think the understanding is that um, docks actually minimize impact to salt marsh, because otherwise you have people walking through salt marsh, dragging boats um, through through those areas.
All right.
So, uh, the wetland regulations have balanced all of these interests and uh, specifically do allow docks in salt marsh, and as you as you like to know, salt marsh is one of the most protected wetland resources, but the regulations specifically allow this, you know, subject to permitting and approvals.
I don't disagree with any of that. I just point out that one dock through a salt marsh, it's a lot less compact than three docks through the salt marsh. But I'll I'll leave that there, because it's obviously a dead horse that's been adequately beaten, so anyone else on the board have anything they want to add?
Well, I don't know, Dave, what about um continuing this for a month or so to have the applicant, uh, and attorney Brodsky um, consider, have the time to really, to take the time to consider the merits and the demerits of a uh, commonly uh, owned and maintained dock, um. I I don't know, I, you know, it's it's too easy to sort of dismiss it. But I I would think it's, it merits further consideration, um, both for economic reasons and also I'm looking at the plan here. Uh, yeah, it's going over mud flats and things, but at high tide in the Gulf, um, kayakers, canoeists and so on and so forth, could could use much of this uh, land here and I think to kind of minimize the number of docks would be beneficial, um, both both visually, but also from a economic standpoint, as well as a a um, you know, kind of a recreational standpoint. I don't know, I mean, I, I'd like to think that they could go back and huddle and really kick it around.
Mr. I I do want you to know that we did huddle and kick it around, and again, this is a client decision. Um, but uh, at the present time, that the client's not interested. Uh, with respect to your concern regarding navigation, um, again, not not a consideration of the zoning board or even the Conservation Commission. It's a a consideration uh, by D P Waterways, they have very specific standards regarding navigation. And this dock is designed to meet those requirements and it will not interfere with uh, navigation as regulated by the Waterways Program.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Charlie?
Uh, I would just like to add as support, it is a good idea and it should be considered. Uh, also probably it does not violate any reg- present existing regulations, but uh, we, it would be good if uh, the parties uh, realize that uh, uh, though we can't stop it, we can't express our opinion that is very, uh, the fewer docks uh, allowed, the better that area will look from a conservation point of view.
Nice, I I have to look at the bylaws, is um, the not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood consideration part of the special permit?
I'll double check, I don't believe so, I think our only place where we could take a closer look would be like water quality drainage patterns, um, but um, I'll pull it up now, I don't think that's a component of the jurisdiction.
But but uh, I do think twelve point five is is relevant, um. That that sets, uh, authorizes us to issue a special permit for a particular use, activity, or development. Um, the permit authority may issue, so.
So.
Some of them really are not particularly relevant, like ingress and egress and so on and so forth, but and no excessive noise, vibration, light, I don't think that's an issue here, but or refuse collection, but there may be other uh, other issues here, there are eight findings we have to make under a generalized special permit.
Sir, Mr. Chidick and and Chairman McMorris, it raises an interesting issue. Um, I understand historically that you governed private docks as a specific use that required special permits under your table of use. Uh, when uh, when the the table and Article Four was revamped, um, that fell out of uh, out of the bylaw. I don't believe, and I could be corrected, I'll I'll defer, it's it's always been a challenge trying to reconcile the changes to the bylaw. I don't believe that uh, a a dock um, needs a general special permit. What it does need is a special permit uh, under Article Nine, and uh, Mr. Watkins is is correct. The the specific standards are set forth in Article Nine. So it's unclear to me that we s- would need a general special permit under Article Twelve. I'll I'll happy to be corrected, but um, I spent a good part of the day trying to figure out what happened to that provision in Article Four.
Yeah. I mean, I I would expect that the detriment to the neighborhood would probably be less of a consideration for this dock, but it might be more of a consideration for the next one. Anyone else on the board have anything they want to add? All right, um. Anyone in the audience, a couple of hands up?
Charlie Ames is being promoted, as well as George McGoldrick.
Yeah, Mr. Ames, um. Well, he's not here yet, right?
Okay, he should be able to unmute.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Mr. Ames, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I um have just a few uh problems with the um, with the design, which I'd like to to fire off, and then I can address the issues, broader issues that you raised. The uh, we have with three design changes that we've proposed and haven't had a response to. Uh, we think that the uh, walkway.
Mr. Ames, can you, can you explain who we is?
Oh, I'm sorry, I represent the Gulf Association.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we'd like to re- see the work walkway reduced in width from forty-eight inches to thirty-six inches. We know that the uh, gangway is only thirty-six inches and there are lots of docks that have thirty-six inch width uh, throughout the town and across the river for in in Sichuan. Uh, we'd like to see the height of the walkway uh, compressed from six feet to four point five feet, which carries out the one, one point five ratio that's required were proposed, uh, pr- proposed by the governing agencies. Uh, so, uh, it's one to one foot of width to one point five feet of height. And that would satisfy that requirement, and then finally, uh, we would reduce the length of this endless walkway uh, by ending it at the marsh flats line and attaching it there to the gangway and dock. And that would uh, save sixty feet, it would save uh, at the number of piles that they've got uh, going out over the mud mud flats. Oh, this the the difference in the the what they what they gain in going further out toward the current uh, is very little, uh, compared with the amount of uh, uh, the compared with what this would look like, uh, when it's raised as large as it is. Uh, one other thing is that I've got on my mind is that at the very uh, at the other end of the pier uh, I don't see any reason why they have to raise the piers up even higher uh, to get over a stone wall that's only, looks like two and a half maybe three feet tall. Uh, they can just uh, go as far as that uh, that it's on wall and uh, have a step over it or two and uh, on the other side, and they'd be all set. So uh, it uh, I think that covers about uh, I don't know, twenty, twenty, twenty to twenty-five feet, which are raised up with an enormous amount up in the air, and I don't think that would sit well. The um this this uh, property is not within the Conservation Com- Commission of the Supper Island, but the um, the the family that, the Penard family that that owned it and imposed the uh, the resource. I'm sorry, the the uh, the um.
Conservation.
The the scenic, uh, I'm sorry, I'm missing it, um. They they have a easement, uh, a a conservation easement, and they uh, say that in the preamble to that, that the preservation of the premises that is the island uh, is an im- is an important public resource. Uh, it it significantly alter it, alternates, alter alterations. It it prohibits significant alterations to its natural character. Uh, it will further protect and enhance the areas sonic, sonic, scenic and uh, open space attributes and the recreational human enjoyment and ecological value of the conservation land and open space. This uh, property is not part of that or affected by that, but it's subject to the same general principles that open space uh, and uh, scenic views, both of the property and out from the property are important environmental uh issues. And uh, we would like to see some uh some accommodation there by uh, by by the two, by all the simplifications that I've mentioned. Uh, we we had previously thought we had a a great way to put a uh, have a communal dock among the four uh, lots that made up the subdivision, the original subdivision. Uh, but uh, I uh, thought that was a good idea until I realized that the uh, was recently told that the the lot belonging to Mr. Uh, belonging to the cl- client here who owns the 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 area with the the and the building leading down to through this design to the sea, to the r- river. Uh, that uh, that the ownership from that house does not extend to the walk, the waterway that I was thinking of as a location for a common dock, which would easily be accessible from all four of the lots, and so that's now been sold or being sold, and uh, the one next to it has been sold to someone who's not interested in community dock as well, so I think that's out, and uh, uh, so a lot of the things that we've been asking for are out as well. Uh, that's that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Ames.
Chair McMorris, this is Adam Brodsky, um, um, this property is not subject to the conservation restrictions that govern Supper Island, so it's a different nation. With respect to all Mr. Ames' questions, uh, Ms. Hudson did respond to those in her September tenth submittal. Uh, they're not uh, they're not feasible or nor recommended, uh, for various reasons, she can address them if you wish.
I'm I'm sorry, uh, Adam, I believe the first uh, letter was um, submitted by Mr. McGoldrick. Um, I'm not sure, that it did come from the Gulf Association, from the Gulf River Association, but I think it was uh, submitted by Mr. McGoldrick, I'm not sure.
I was going to your your letter, Carmen, where you addressed these concerns.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Definitely.
Yeah, um, I think McGoldrick had his hand up as well.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, George McGoldrick, one oh seven Border Street. Uh. The four requests that the Gulf Association made that Mr. Ames just spoke about reducing the width of the walkway, reducing the height, ending the pier at the tidal flats line versus going sixty feet out into the into the uh, was basically mud flats. And then the one other one that uh, we had talked about was positioning the gangway and float more to the south. The reasons that we're asking for these is they have less of an impact on the resource areas. And I would suggest the board look at the approval that seventy-five Border Street received four years ago when they had a similar plan and the Gulf worked with them and the town and to reduce the impact to the uh, to the wetlands and the salt marsh and the riverfront area, and they ended up with a uh, brief wide walkway, that's about three to four feet off of the salt marsh. It ends at the end of the salt marsh, and then their gangway and floater are on skids like this one would be uh, in the river. The the fact that this goes sixty feet of piers from the salt marsh into the tidal flats doesn't benefit the homeowner because he would just be walking an extra sixty feet to go to his dock. It doesn't give him more access to the channel, because that entire area is flats. And I would think you'd want to reduce the cost to build this end it at the salt flats, have your gangway and pier gangway and float, and then I'd rather kayak out to the channel at high tide or mid tide versus walking all the way out there, so what we're proposing actually greatly reduces almost by half the cost of building the pier for the applicant. It greatly reduces the appearance for all the abudders and neighbors, and if you look at the profile scale that they have, it's it's almost fourteen feet above the mud mud flats. Uh, and that's a significantly big impact to the salt marsh and to the tidal flats. And again, I'd suggest that the board look at what was done at seventy-five as well as thirty-three Cedar Street, which is the pier directly to the south of this proposal. which has lower to the salt flats, uh salt marsh. Comes just off of the salt marsh, doesn't go well into the tidal flats, doesn't have the railing and works perfectly in terms of the harmony of the entire uh area. More importantly, one of the reasons we're asking to minimize the length of this is because it does impact recreational use in the river because there is a waterway directly adjacent to this pier. And unfortunately, the plan that is uh was proposed by uh Carmen Hudson doesn't show where the waterway is, but the waterway is directly north of this pier. And this would discourage kayakers and paddle boards, which we all do, uh to go through that waterway, which has to be open to the public. We raised the issue with this board earlier about the fact that that access has been uh minimized by the new owner of the adjacent lot. And we're working with the Conservation Trust who has the restriction to try to rebuild the bridge to allow the public access, which yet the public does have rights to. So what we're asking for is nothing that is going to increase the cost to the developer. In fact, it's going to greatly reduce the cost. It's not going to decrease his access to the waterfront. It's going to increase the recreational use to the waterway adjacent to his property. And aesthetically, it's going to look exactly like the pier that is closest to this property. You know, finally, the the Gulf Association, again, we're stewards of the river. We're the unfortunately, we're the neighborhood watch group. And so people don't like when we try to enforce the bylaws of the town and try to keep the river as clean and pristine as possible. But what we're not asking for is anything that wasn't done. Again, look at seventy-five Border Street, which was approved four years ago, and look at thirty-three Cedar Street, the most the closest dock to this proposed one. And they have done things that minimize the impact to the riverfront and the salt marsh.
Thank you.
Thanks.
If if I may?
Please.
I actually, I would like to share my screen. And I was just I was just looking at the the dock at seventy-five Border Street that Mr. McGoldrick had mentioned. That's this dock right here. As you can see, that the intent of any dock is to try to get as close to the waterway as possible. And I know that Mr. McGoldrick was referring to this twelve to sixteen foot channel here as a waterway, but the waterway here is the Gulf River. And as you can see, the actual channel of the river, you know, varies over here. It goes towards the west and it from the west, it comes towards the east. So at seventy-five Border Street, they have this dock in this float that ends very close to the actual channel. I actually worked on the project at thirty-three Border Street, and that was back in the day when um the docks needed to have a special permit under section five. I'm sorry, it's under section four for use as well as under section nine for the flood plain. And also, this was before we had a requirement now by the it it started with ZZM, then the Army Corps of Engineers, now with uh Chapter ninety-one and the Conservation Commission of asking a one point five to one ratio of separation to the salt marsh. Uh, so you use the width and you multiply it by one point five, and that is what the separation to the salt marsh from the bottom of the stringers has to be. So this, when this dock was approved, the requirement was a one to one. So a four-foot dock only required to be four feet up from the salt marsh. And by the way, this dock is well over five hundred feet because the the length of the salt marsh, as you can see, it starts over here. And it goes well into the tidal marsh as well, well over fifty feet into into the tidal mar- marsh. Why? Because the intent, once again, is to try to get to the channel. So unfortunately, we would love to keep the one-to-one, but we are not going to be able to get that approved through Conservation, the Army Corps and the Chapter ninety-one.
Well, I understand that. I think that the gentleman's point was that if you reduce the width from four to three, then you can reduce the height.
At the same time, well, if we do that, a three-foot wide dock is very narrow, especially for this length. If you're carrying a kayak, and also they would like to see no no railings. This, the reason why this had no railings was because it we only provided a one-to-one ratio. We cannot do that now. So we have to provide railings. And imagine a three foot, you know, literally three feet to be carrying a kayak if you have to or whatever you might for two hundred and forty-one feet is just not safe. And once again, if we're looking at existing docks, this is the perfect example of thirty-three seater lane over five hundred feet in length. You know, this was a one-to-one ratio. And it, once again, the whole purpose of this is to try to get to the actual channel. And as you can see, they're going well, you know, over fifty feet into the tidal marsh to try to get to the channel. In our case, we are going to be over here, we're going over the salt marsh and into the tidal into the the tidal flats about here, and we're still going to be well over a hundred and fifty feet to the channel.
Right. So I I think, can you can you respond to, I think, Mr. McGoldrick's point was that if you're if you're in the mud, you're in the mud. And what's the benefit of being sixty-five or sixty feet farther out into the mud? When you better wait for the water to come in to be able to float out to the channel anyway?
Sir Chairman McMorris, it's it's Adam Brodsky. Can I just interject? I don't know why we're talking about this. This is far beyond this board's jurisdiction. You don't have jurisdiction over wetland impacts, don't have jurisdiction over navigation. You don't have authority to regulate aesthetics. If these are concerns, the the concerns should be uh made to the boards which have the those uh uh jurisdiction over those issues. So I I don't mean to forestall the conversation, but it's a conversation without a regulatory end here this evening.
I think you, I think you're probably correct about that. I'm not positive you are and and I would like to look at that a little more closely. Um, but we do have members of the public who have raised significant issues that are of concern to them. Uh, whether or not we have any regulatory authority over them is obviously a question that we have to address. But I think it's also useful for the applicant to hear others' concerns so that they consider can consider what alterations they might make that would be more acceptable to their neighbors, more acceptable to the Gulf Association. Um, you know, it's because something is not um subject to enforcement, doesn't mean that it's a good idea.
I I disagree, Chairman McMorris. All I do see are these very same property owners with their own docks.
Well, that's true.
Uh, so I I I draw no conclusions regarding that.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes.
Uh, George McGoldrick again. Um, yes, Mr. Brodsky, we have our own docks. And all we're trying to do is minimize the impacts to the river. So if I'd ask if Ms. Hudson, uh if she could show on that what was either Google Earth map that she was showing, if she could show to the board and to us where exactly the the proposed dock is going to be, that would be very helpful because again, one of the concerns is the access to that waterway. Uh, you may, it's, yes, it's not in the channel, but it's part of the waterway and the public has the rights to it. So it'd be helpful to see on that plan, on the overview that uh Ms. Hudson showed where this proposed dock is. Because I think where she pointed was significantly further away than where the actual thing is. Again, we are not opposed to having this dock. We just think it could be minimized and give the same benefits to the this isn't even the owner of the house. This is the developer's going to sell it. So we think it's going to give the same exact benefits to the ultimate owner of this house, but have less of it impact on the river. All we're asking for. It'd be a hell of a lot cheaper.
And I am interested just actually on what the difference is on where you are in the mud.
I'm sorry, what was uh what was your question? Where you are in the mud?
Yeah, what's what is a practical matter as a as a a boat user? What's the difference whether you're in the mud at the beginning of the mud or sixty feet out of the mud closer to the channel?
It's primarily.
Water to come in to get to the channel, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes. So it depends on the depth, really. And the depth really starts changing once one starts getting closer to the channel. Um, so it would just be primarily. I mean, you get a little bit higher, you know, getting closer. Um, it's just the distance that you're going to have to paddle, you know, to get there.
Yeah, the whole point of going out there, actually, paddle. But anyway, let's move on. Um, anyone else on the board have a question? Uh, anyone from the audience? Anyone from the uh?
Paul, Paul Tedeschi had a question earlier.
Okay. I'm here if you can, I mean, if you hear me. Okay, great. So just because I know you reference our property, Paul and Jill Tedeschi, seventy-five border, we figured we'd listen in because it was after the last one. Um, I just want to give a couple of comments based on the purview of what this board looks at. A three-foot wide dock with the height that our dock was permitted is not safe. Um, we accepted it because it was a condition that we were getting lobbied by the Gulf River Association and some neighbors um for aesthetics. But at the end of the day, a three-foot wide dock with the height that we have is not very safe. Uh, we've since had John Howland, the building inspector, and Charlotte, the new commissioner, who wasn't involved at the time. Both have agreed. Uh, the Concom made a condition of our approval that we would not have railings. But again, a four-foot, three-foot wide with the height we have is not safe. If it was four-foot wide, we would have felt safer. Um, and both have agreed. So I just asked this group to think about, you know, what some of these other folks have have petitioned. I I I have no discussion on um navigation and all that. I agree, it should probably end at the salt marsh. That's what ours did. That's what most peoples do. It shouldn't jet out any further. You know, I know there was reference to the other, but we are in support because of having gone for two years with all the back and forth with various boards. You know, at the end of the day, what's accepted and what's realistic are two different things. And if anyone on this board would like to come out to our property at seventy-five border and walk the dock you're welcome to.
It's scary.
It's scary. I would just ask that you take that consideration in mind. And I know since our dock was built in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, John Howland has referenced that the building department is now involved. Um, John Howland, I'm sorry, and you can reference this, but you know, from a safety concern, there are DEP requirements, et cetera. And so to just say, oh, three feet wide, no railings, please consider the safety issue. So that's all we have to say. But you know, most of us who live in the Gulf who have the required setbacks have done this over time, and I think the applicant should be allowed um within reason. But I think just consider some of those requests that you're receiving and take them um you know, within reason for what is practical uh for safety. Thank you.
Yeah, that's very helpful. Anyone else? Okay. Uh, let me see, this is Matt here, the quarterback on this one. Do you want to make a motion?
Come on, mute there. Um, yeah, I'll make a motion that we continue the hearing.
Second. All right. All right, what do you today?
Aye.
Lee Darst.
Aye.
Michael Tiki.
Aye.
Natalie Higginson.
Aye.
Morrissey, Matt Watkins.
Aye.
All right, let's just continue to our November meeting. And the next.
Chairman McMorris, uh, forgive me, I should have interjected before, but is there an expectation that there may be a draft decision for the next meeting?
Um. Probably. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Uh, the next next uh applicant to this special permit at thirty-four Summer Street.
So Brendan Sullivan from Merrill Engineers is promoted um as well as um Amy Pruitt, the applicant.
Right. And let's see. We had some additional materials submitted on this one, which included a letter including the facade and volume calculations dated nine twenty-four, revised site plan dated nine twenty-four, revised architectural plan dated nine twenty-four. So I think Brendan, can you just give us a quick summary of what the changes were between what we looked at last time and what we're looking at today?
Sure. Um, so the um, if I could share my screen, uh the the original site plan, um I had a uh the setback being fourteen-two, um, but then I discovered that the carport is actually connected to the garage, which is connected to the house. Um, so my existing right yard setback is now three-nine instead of the fourteen-two. Um, so that was changed. That was updated on the site on the site plan. Um, and the architecturals just showed the um um the areas of the facade uh within the within the setback. Um, and the the letter and calculations uh reflect those um areas and facade calculations. Um, so for a a quick overview, this is the the right side, um, which are all in green and red is existing non-conforming. Um, and proposed, uh, we're going to uh just this area in blue. Um, and this area in white, which will be non-conforming. Um, that and that's in that side is actually a decrease in almost in about forty-two percent decrease uh of facade. Um, and the left side of the house, the existing left side is shown non-conforming, which is basically the whole left side of the house. Uh, the green is shown as the the screen porch. Um, and this is the 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 existing garage and and the and the carport in the in the in the background. Um, so then the proposed uh the proposed left side uh looks something like this. Um, which is the existing non-conforming is shown in white and the proposed non-conforming is shown in blue. Um, and that is a um approximately twenty-two percent increase in facade.
But, okay, but the and the the increased non-conform facade is going to be have a little bit more of a setback than the existing. Is that right?
Uh, uh, yes.
All right, um, Lee, this is the, you're the designated on this one. Do you have uh any questions or?
Uh, no, I actually read the draft decision and looked at the newly submitted um information and I do not have any, I don't have any additional comments.
Okay, do you think we're at at a point where we can close the hearing?
Uh, unless anybody else on the board has any other questions. We did receive all the the information that we requested and that was incorporated into the decision. So I believe unless anybody else has any questions or comments, I think we could entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, you want to make that motion?
Aye.
I'm sorry to interject. There is a um a hand raised in the attendees.
Okay.
Um, Annette Sawchuk is being promoted.
Okay, there she is, Annette.
He, she happens to be a he.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And the point that I want to make, uh, this is Wayne Sawchuk. And I'm going to be the proposed builder on the site. And I think that one of the things that I wanted to convey was that that the canopy and area that's that's in the uh the uh pre-existing carport, you know, is going to be taken off off of the site. It's going to be just demoed. And the garage is going to be uh pushed about thirty-five feet to the rear of the lot. And it'll be further away from the the fifteen foot that uh that they need. And that you can see by the plan in the red that we're almost exactly on the the uh on what's there to go up.
Right.
Just wanted to to uh to say that this is going to be a great improvement on open space. Just wanted to, uh, to say that this is going to be a great improvement on open space along the side of the building. Uh, and that's all I had.
Okay, thank you.
Now, Wayne, one, one, one interesting piece I think is. You're, you're proposing to. Move the garage. The existing garage versus raise and reconstruct the garage, right, and that's. That's my understanding of the plan.
Yes, it's, it's, it's.
Yeah.
We're gonna, you know, put it up on rollers and we're gonna move it back. And the, it's, it's almost something we have to do because I can't get any equipment in behind the, where the, where the building is going to be. You know, prepared, so, uh, I had some leeway and, and, and in fact, as it goes back. If you see if there's a site plan out there that, uh, I think Brendan might be, have up, have up on the screen.
Yeah.
Um.
I can see that.
As it's going back, it's getting further away from the lot line and, um. And, and for once, we're going to have a ability to go up and maybe have to leave and turn around in the, in the front of it so that. Uh, they don't have to back out all the way through to the, to Summer Street, which is a fairly, uh, uh. Tight area they're getting in and out of, so for safety, we're looking at that and, and, and we're, like I said, we're. You know, totally removing, uh, some things that, that help it in every way.
Yeah, the only reason I raise it is, it did, it did. Looked to me on the age of the garage, like it'll probably be a challenge to roll it back, but if it resulted in. You know, having to raise it and reconfigure it, you would have to make sure that. You know, you had the appropriate setback to do that, um. I don't have any.
Correct.
Concern with the application at all as, as it's presented to us, but. Yeah, I was just clarifying that that is the ca- case that you're actually moving that versus, uh. Kind of raising and reconstructing it elsewhere.
Right.
Alright, so Lee, do you have a motion?
I have a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Uh, Woody Chittick, second.
Right. Um, we should. And seconded that we close the hearing, one, three, four. Woody Chittick.
Aye.
Lee Darst.
Aye.
Michael Dickey.
Aye.
Charlie Higgins.
Aye.
David Morrissey, Matt Watkins.
Aye.
So, ninety-four Summers, those, that's the last hearing we have on, of course. The next item would be the deliberation of thirty-four Summer Street.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. So Lee, you had an opportunity to review the draft decision.
I did.
And did, did you have any? Changes or corrections or anything on it, any comments?
Um, I don't have any comments on it, I believe if, um, I think. I think that it was prepared. Um, with the benefit of reviewing the information that was submitted tonight, is that right? Julia, does it?
I'm sorry, what, what do you mean by the question?
Um, I think that you incorporated the information that they submitted tonight. Um, especially, uh, with respect to the volume increases and everything, so I think it's already been updated. On what was submitted and what we discussed, so.
That is correct.
Yes.
Anyone on the board have any questions, comments? Alright.
The only thing I underlined, it, it might just be a wordsmith thing that. If, if anything, I can submit a, uh, potential, um, markup on it, but. When we talked, I think we all agreed that it wasn't detrimental to the neighborhood and we have language in there to say that, um. Part of our rationale is, as you know, as the home size will be in scale and character to the surrounding homes in the immediate area, as well as the neighborhood. And on this street in particular, I think we've had lots that have come on in front of us that have a very narrow lot, and this is one of them. Um, and they've kind of said. That it fits the character of the neighborhood because it's similar to those around it, and we'll push back on that. I think what worked on this one is that it's like an infill of the back area. So certainly it fits the character of the neighborhood, but not because of the size of the homes around it, you know, um. So I think we're covered, but I might just send a little word tweet for consideration, uh, was my only thought on it.
Okay.
Motion to accept the decision with, uh, any necessary word tweaks.
Seconded.
Right, all those in favor, Woody Chittick.
Aye.
Lee Darst.
Aye.
Michael Dickey.
Aye.
Charles Higgins.
Aye.
David McMorrissey, Matt Watkins.
Aye.
Alright, next is the minutes of August sixth. So everyone had a chance to look at those?
Um, I did, I thought they were extremely thorough and reflected the hearings accurately.
So I'm, I'm sorry, I misspoke, the minutes of September tenth.
Yes.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any comments on it or corrections or? Alright, and then we accept the minutes as drafted for the September tenth meeting.
Second. The sentence about, uh, uh, pub, open to the public. Uh, I suggest we remove or say, uh, par- partially is not open to the public.
So this is on.
Page three, I believe.
Page three, eighty-two Border Street. Alright, can you, Charlie, what paragraph are we in there? Charlie, what's our paragraph you want?
I don't have it in front of me, so I, I need help here.
Alright.
It's the, the top third of the page, and I think it was on page three of the draft opinion. No, no, of the, uh, uh.
Minutes.
I guess I'm missing the point, what, what's the issue?
In the draft text of the last meeting. It says that the property is not open to the public. And, uh, I, to my observation, part of it at least is open to the public.
I'm not seeing, seeing that at all, but.
I do remember it, I do remember when I read it today, but now I don't know where it was.
Um, I think there's a sentence where it states there will not be a public restaurant. Um, and there will not be a public bar.
No, no. No, no, we're, we're, that, that's not the decision that we're dealing with.
Uh, it is, it did say that.
Aren't we at thirty-four Summer Street?
No.
No, I'm talking about the notes from, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Eighty-two, um.
Eighty-two border.
There was, I mean, I can't find it now, there was a section that said it's not currently. Open to the public and what Charlie wants to say is that. Um, it's a partially open because it's a business that invites people. Um.
I don't think the whole sentence is important, so I just scrub it as the easiest.
Uh huh.
I know I saw it, but you can't find it.
Alright. Okay, if we can locate it, let's scrub that particular sentence or indicate that it's, uh. Open to public for one retail operation only. I, I can't find it anywhere. But, alright, um, so we have a motion to accept the minutes as adjusted.
Uh, seconded.
Alright, all those in favor, Woody Chittick.
Aye.
Lee Darst.
Aye.
Michael Dickey.
Aye.
Charlie Higgins.
Sure, aye.
David Morrissey, Matt Watkins.
Aye.
Alright, would, would you mind if I just, um, offline? Change the third paragraph on page three where they're only going to have one full-time employee. And then it's Mr. O'Mara said there'll not be more than four employees on site at a time. That's really not what he said, uh, they'll, they'll be, uh, contract workers perhaps, but I don't. You either have one, one employee or four employees, but you don't have both.
Okay, I can make that change, so, um, what is the new sentence to say, do you mind if I just?
I don't know, let me deal with it offline, I mean, we'll just, you could probably delete the. Mr. O'Mara said that there'll not be more than four employees on site at a time. A, I don't remember it, but you have the record, but B. What he really stressed is that there would be only one employee on site at a time and there would be contract workers. Be the, um, landscapers or, um, cleaning and whatever.
Okay. Alright, we have the, the next item on our agenda is the presentation of the planning board zoning bylaw amendments and discussion and. Mercifully, that's not till next Tuesday. Uh, we also have discussion of the draft rules, regulations and fee schedule. Um, has everyone had enough to look those things over?
Yeah.
I've, I've got one issue and it may be a carryover from before, but this, uh, one inch to twenty feet scale. Um, results in these humongously large. Plans in front of us that practically cover the bed and back of me, I could use it as a, as a quilt. Um, is, is one inch to twenty feet? Is that what's happening? Uh, we're getting these overs, uh, we've never had plans that large before, they're really unwieldy.
So I believe that in the revised rules and regulations, there is, um, a sentence in there, it should be in red. Um, stating that the plans can be submitted half-size unless. Um, specified by the members.
Oh, okay.
Because I think from past meetings, it has been voiced the concern of the amount of paper and. Um, the size of the plans, that might be an issue for some of the members.
Okay, well, I'm looking at the revised. And on page four or five, site plan, eight copies of a site plan at one inch to twenty feet, now. Where does it say it can be half-size?
Above that, it says physical copies of plan should be submitted in half-size.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Okay, so in other words, the building department has, has a one inch to twenty feet, but we can deal with one inch. Or, or half an inch to twenty feet or whatever, no. Two inches to twenty feet.
One to forty.
Ten feet, never mind, whatever it is, John Howland can fix that. I'm getting brain dead here.
Yeah, they added that since the last time, uh, we brought it up. I mean, I thought, I thought the. Over obviously.
It's great.
The revamp looks pretty with the times, I guess, and pretty straightforward, so it. I didn't see anything that jumped out at me as a problem.
Anybody have any issues? Otherwise, I'd make a motion to approve the, uh. Um, regulations as amended.
Seconded.
Seconded to accept the. The regulations, and are you also including the application?
Yes, yes, that whole packet.
Alright, and there's been a second, all those in favor, Woody Chittick.
Aye.
Lee Darst. Michael Dickey.
Aye.
Charlie Higgins.
Aye.
David McMorris. Aye, and Mike what?
Forgot who you were.
Kept waiting for him to respond.
Yeah, what, come on. Run a tight ship there, Dave.
Alright.
Okay, back to the minutes, I found the sentence that Charlie was referring to. It, on page two, paragraph two, the fourth sentence, the fourth lineup. Said, "Public access to the property is proposed, which currently does not exist."
Ah. Wait, that was just, why don't we just say? Which currently is extremely limited.
Yes, I think that's better because they wanted to show that, you know, they were, they were, what, completing the harbor walk.
Mm-hmm, yes. Okay.
Okay. Okay, and change that language to, um, instead of currently does not exist to currently. Extremely limited, okay, thank you.
Alright, so our next meeting is, is November twelfth.
Well, actually, it's next week.
Well, I'm sorry, yes, it is, it's October eighth.
Special meeting.
Special meeting, seven o'clock. Tom Callahan will be joining us to discuss, um, some bylaw changes, which by the way, I, I. I know Woody was and Charlie were both at the forum last night, I watched some of it on, uh, on the Zoom. The by, proposed bylaw changes are, are pretty limited, the real problematic ones have been pulled off the table. So it's a, it's a better, better thing than it was, oh, and. The problem that we had with the setbacks where they, they inadvertently dropped something out of bylaw. Is being put back in, so we'll see that next week too.
Right, where the, where the, where the road is less than forty feet or, or forty feet or less.
Right, and I would like to find out, when, when they were talking about our. Uh, the things that we consider for special permit for a dock. Um, where did the section four consideration go and when did it go somewhere? Does anybody have any idea?
Yeah, I would, I, I'd have to look at the old one and compare it, I always, I didn't know if we'd see any value in. Almost like submitting an email to town council to verify. Uh. I, I guess we can just look at that to figure it out, I, I didn't know in, with our discussions tonight if it made any sense to just verify our. Do's and don'ts on jurisdiction, but I, I think we kind of know the answer, so I, I don't know if that's worth it or not, you know?
I don't think it ever hurts to ask town council, I mean, if it's really a, an, you know, a. There's some anomaly or, uh, uncertainty. Um, she's pretty backed up, but you could get an answer, you know, within a week or something.
Okay. Alright, anyone else have anything they want to raise at this point? Alright, so we're gonna get to watch the entire debate, lucky us.
Yes, you, you did a good job because I was about to unplug my machine.
Alright, and then can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
All else, okay, all in favor of adjourning, Woody Chittick.
Aye.
Lee Darst.
Lee Darst, aye.
Michael Dickey.
Aye.
Charlie Higgins.
Aye.
David McMorrissey, Matt Watkins.
Aye.
Excellent, it's good to see you all, see you next week.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Julia.